Is there anything that you want to finish up with before I start our meeting? If not, okay. We have on agenda thanks to a person that keeps us in order. We're looking at the comprehensive permit for the Capes of Thurlin and I'll turn the floor over to Amy.
Thank you. So, I drafted a decision and while drafting the decision, I came up with an entire, a whole list of things that are missing. So, I did speak with, or I emailed with Mr. Rhodes' counsel that he retained after he closed the hearing. So, I did speak with his counsel and his counsel, it was my impression that his counsel understood that with all of this missing information, the only thing that this board could do is, you would be issuing a decision that wouldn't allow him to build because we're missing things and there's waivers that are needed that we would need. You recall, we had kind of the same problem the first time and what happened was it got appealed, it came back down to this board. So, in an effort to avoid all of that, I think Mr. Rhodes' counsel had suggested possibly reopening the hearing. So, if the applicant requests that the hearing be reopened, this board can accept that request and then we would advertise it for March 11th and the new information would have to come in before March 11th. And then on March 11th, we would discuss the, we would discuss the decision based on all of the information that we need.
Can I inquire as to what information we need?
So, we don't have, we don't have any setbacks. We don't have, for example, we don't have frontage for the lots, we don't have, you know, the minimum setback for the front yard, backyard yard, we don't have, you know, how far apart the houses are, all of those things which have to be waived because they don't meet the requirements under the zoning bylaw. And they're not the same as last time because last time, we were dealing with three lots instead of 12 lots. So, they're completely different and we don't have that information. So, that's, that's missing. There are two waivers that I don't understand. I don't know, I don't know if I would classify that as missing information, but I would like to be able to get more information on those two waivers. They have to do with the septic system, with septic systems, I'm sorry. So, that's information that I would like. It could be in here, but I don't know enough to find it. It would be helpful if the engineer could help me out with that. And I don't think that we, I still don't know what we're going to do about homeowners association versus condominium association. I don't know if we're going to get a better answer than we got last time, which was repeated over and over to us, which is just that it's not going to be a condominium association. But if we, perhaps if we got a better explanation, we could make a more informed decision.
Is this also changing the facts of plans where septic systems are going under, driveways and around, and up and down, and little hunks of land? None of that has changed unless we open the whole thing and start it again, right?
None, I don't expect the site layout to change at all.
Really?
Correct. All I need to see is, for example, frontage. We don't know what the frontage is along the road. They're creating a road with a cul-de-sac. We don't know each lot. There should be 12 lots and there should be 12 frontages because you're supposed to have 200 feet of frontage. So, you guys have to waive 200 feet of frontage. But we need to know how much you're waiving, what you're waiving, things like that.
Comments, thoughts?
What happens if we sign against opening?
Then we issue a decision tonight because our 40 days expires, like, I think it's on the 14th.
Next week.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. Which is a holiday, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we, but, so we would have to go through the draft decision that I sent over today and, and then we would have to deny any waivers, face any dimensional waivers and the project can't be built. So, he would, he would appeal to HAC and I'm not going to predict what HAC would do, but most likely, they'll send it back.
Why say it does not get approved, this, this new decision? Wouldn't it revert back to the original approved decision?
It would, but he is sorry to appeal the denial of modification.
Anyone else have any thoughts they'd like to express before we move forward?
What's Amy's recommendation?
My recommendation, since we're, we're going to end up in the same place, my recommendation would be to have them reopen the hea, to ask, have them ask to reopen the hearing, which again, I don't know if they're going to, ask to reopen the hearing and I would have the board accept it and let them submit the information that we need for March. So, the modification request-
Well, I don't have any requests here, is that-
They would have to, they would have to put those in writing for us, but that could be done here. It's important to remember that the modification request is the only thing that we can act on and the modification request is essentially going from three lots with four houses each to 12 lots. And that's where all of these dimensional requirements come in because the dimensional requirements are changing and that's part of the modification. And then, as you remember, the first, the first, and well, the original decision and the remand decision had a condominium association. So, now he's proposing a homeowners association, so that is also part of the modification. So, we do have a, we do have the right to look into that. We do have the right to analyze that.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? I see that the folks are in the writing, if they wanted to submit something to us in writing, fine, and we'll take a look at the Sawyer Hill condominium decision.
Sure.
And in the meantime, and if something comes before us, because we can't really receive testimony from anyone, right?
You cannot. The, the hearing is closed, you cannot receive-
But if there were a letter that were presented to us, then we could entertain it.
Correct.
Could we take a minute to draft a request to reopen the hearing?
What we're going to do here, me, is we're going to go on and talk about the decision, the Sawyer Hill condominium trust. And if in the next 15 minutes, you want to submit something to us in writing, then that's fine with me and I would suggest that you run it by Amy so that before you present it to us, so we don't get into where this doesn't meet the criteria type thing.
Okay.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the decision for Sawyer Hill condominium trust and if we signed it?
I have it here, it's not signed.
Okay.
I sent it electronically for everybody to review and I have it here if people want to sign.
Okay. Anyone have any comments before we start signing?
Do you want me to sign it? Oh, I can't sign it anyway.
There you go. You do have blanks in it? When I drafted it, I drafted it with blanks.
For Sawyer Hill?
Yeah.
Yes, I filled it in.
Okay.
I filled in the, yes.
Got it.
Who sat on the board and who made the motions.
And she made signatures for all of us.
Okay, great.
The only thing that's not on here is a town clerk then, which I guess she could just stamp it or whatever, but I'm supposed to sign and attest that it's the real copy. Maybe we could get, yeah, no, maybe we could get you to take one off of another.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the certification page?
Yep.
And that only needs to be signed by me.
By you.
And then it goes to the town clerk and it has all the verbiage on it. So, would you become to be doing that later on? Okay. Anyone have any questions about this? I mean, we, you basically voted on it, right? We have a vote.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's today's date? The 5th?
Very good.
Yeah, if you could, folks, if you don't have a black pen, we can borrow, lend you one because when they get reproduced, the blue sometimes doesn't come out too well.
Lynn, I also have the decisions for the in-law apartment at 237 Gates Pond Road and the pool at 5 Randall Road.
Okay. And those have already been voted, so we can sign those based on-
Not this one. Not this one either. Where you're betting.
I don't think, I've been working.
So, we have some busy work. Maybe we could stop the other one at the, there's two of them, right? Stop the other one at the other end.
Yeah, they're already, they're not my schedule here. Got black and a black one? I need black, black, I think that's black. That is black.
While we're waiting, is everybody available for the next, for our meeting next Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Just Jenny.
Okay, Jenny in the locker.
Oh, is there a third page that I can put my-
Don't lose them.
This one right here.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, just make sure I initially each of the pages and sign them.
Can I just put the date on it?
Back at, whoops. I just blew your little here.
And to-
There we go. Okay, Lynn to this one. And then up until you.
We do do other work.
Amy, if, say something passes four to one instead of five to zero, is the dissenting person still signing?
You're only signing, you're confirming, all you're doing is confirming.
Confirming the vote.
But if you don't want to, as long as you have four signatures.
Another one for you.
The 237 Gates Pond, is this the whole thing of that last page? Because this should be a whole thing for the town clerk.
Yeah, unless it's got lost somewhere with somebody else.
That is Gates Pond.
No, that's Olympia Avenue.
No, but it is, it's a-
No, that's the owners. The owners live at Olympia Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they haven't bought the property yet, purchased it.
So, this goes to you. I guess, page four.
Yes, that would be a little bit like that, scattering.
Can I sign this even though the town clerk hasn't gotten it yet because it doesn't mean anything without my signature, it's hers? Okay, I think, has everybody signed this? Yeah, this is all, okay. This goes back to the head of the table.
Okay, I believe that one's done now.
Let's see this one. Okay, but that needs to go over there.
She's, she sent it to here.
Okay. Yeah, I'll give that to you.
Well, yeah, modification of comprehensive permit. And I think Mr. Rhodes should sign it too because this is a new name. Do you?
Yeah, that's all. And date it, you date your signature.
There's a blue one.
Yeah, he would sign it.
We'll put that, we'll give that to Eloise, a copy at least, or she should, or she can give the original one a copy if it's a subject.
Okay, where's the, a testing page for this one? Okay, thank you. Are you happy with this?
That's fine.
Okay. Down to the end of the table before I scoop it. Okay, I'm here with the condominium trust one, okay? And I don't see-
I believe that was only a two-page.
The last page of it. But I have been known to speak things up.
That's correct. Let's fill it back up.
I don't think it's a-
Following her.
I did one of my houses, it was like last week, yeah. It seems like it's, it's too thin to be a state bug. They're like fatter, I thought.
Hungry? How much I could eat this better?
What is it?
It's the same bug that was here last month, isn't it?
Oh.
I'm trying to see them.
The wet thing. Added to the list.
I wasn't paying attention last time and knew what our next meeting was.
Okay, let's see. There's a page missing from that other one, though.
She's saying Sawyer Hill, right?
Yeah. There should be a third page to this one, which I just checked.
Pass that back to her.
I wrote down it to get ethical.
Yeah, I'll let anybody have it.
I think it's because I drafted it. I didn't put in-
Oh, the Sawyer Hill?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's missing.
Oh, okay.
It's just missing the page you want to go to Eloise or child.
Thank you, she's got it.
Okay. We, you know the third page, or you can see it on here and it's just, yeah, if you could do that, you've got the signature you need from the folks here. And then I can sign that one when you- I don't know what we ever did do for you. Okay, we can send this down to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we have noted, we have a request for us to entertain a motion to reopen the modification to, is it a modification of the two, is it three?
It's a modification to a comprehensive permit because the remand decision incorporated the original decision.
So, what is the feeling of the board?
That would be what, next weekend? Next month?
We couldn't do it next week. We would have to do it in March.
March 11th. Which is the second one.
Because they have to give orders again in April.
Yes, March 11th. That's the second one, so.
Okay, folks, I'm waiting to hear from you. Well-
March 11th, yeah.
If nobody has any comments, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we reopen the Capes of Berlin, 58 South Street comprehensive permit modification hearing.
Based on the request.
Based on the request. And that's all. For March 11th.
By Mr. Rhodes and counsel. And we might want to say to allow for emissions or something along those lines.
So, we are reopening the hearing, so-
We have a motion, we don't have even a second yet, so.
Right, but, so any, any information regarding the modification would be coming in?
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Speak your minds and if, if you have a feeling, but, and it's strong, let's run it up the flagpole so that you don't say, I wish I knew afterwards or something.
Isn't it just, we either reopen it or we don't?
Basically.
Yes, but, and we're protected as far as if for some, if something happens in next month, they bring in a set of plans that we can't, I mean, we don't want this to go on any longer, trust me. But if there's still some deficit or something, we have time to deal with that, right?
Yeah, reopening the hearing, I mean, they're reopening the hearing, so we would have the 180 days. We obviously, I, I don't think we would need that.
All want that.
No. Most of the information that is missing is our calculations that I think Seth already has, so Seth being the engineer. So, I think he's already provided those. Unfortunately, he can't give us that information until March 11th, until in anticipation of March 11th, we can't discuss that information until March 11th. Like I said, the one issue that the board, I think, is going to have to discuss and grapple with is the condominium versus homeowners. But there's quite a bit of information that is, is just, it's factual information, it's there, it's not hard for them to combine.
And maybe we'll get some answers.
We could.
Okay. Anything further than any?
Mr. Medgar is saying about-
This isn't a hearing and we can't receive any information about the project, okay? We can only receive that information if and when we reopen the hearing. And that's the whole reason why Mr. Rhodes and his attorney are requesting that we reopen the hearing so that he can present the answers to questions that counsel has. Everyone comfortable on voting? I'm going to ask, we have the five, I'm sorry?
Could you just hold on?
Sure.
Sorry, I just thought of something.
While Amy takes a few minutes, did everyone have a chance to review the annual report?
Yes.
Uh-huh. It was fine.
Everybody, so I was entertaining a motion to-
Motion to approve the annual report.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye? All those opposed, we will shoot at sunrise? Okay, so you can go ahead then, Leanne, and forward that to the-
And we've got meeting minutes of December 11th.
Read those.
Okay.
They were fine.
Motion to accept the minutes of December 11th.
A second.
And Amy has seen those, right? Okay.
So, Chris, this is, if they accept the reopening, your client has to waive any claim of constructive approval based on the 180 days or the 40 days.
Of course, of course.
But just write it down.
I think it was implied, yes, but I-
But there's nothing like being explicit. It saves, it saves points. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we, to approve the meeting minutes of December 11th?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll take anyone that was here, anyone that was not here, we'll just, okay? If the five regulars were here. Sign warrants. I just want to let you know that I'm turning in under $10. You can see it if you want. Request for postage and a Form 3665, which I learned about.
Yes.
So, if you want to, I mean, Danny can go ahead and do that, but rather than you even having to come back next month, he's going to approve it and I bet anyone has any objection, please let me know. Okay?
Sorry about that one.
And I have payroll for Lynn for this month. Two oh two oh five.
All I think we need to do is note in the minutes that you brought.
Yikes.
The amount and hours to the attention of the committee because he has a single signatory thing. How are we doing for money in that account, do you know, or is that a bad question? Okay, we'll get that after. Okay, you're all set now, are we?
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, we are.
Okay, so we have, what's, and we had a motion and a second, didn't we?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak to this? Have a feeling, want to ask Amy a question? If not, we have the five regulars here, I'll start with you, Jim.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, and I'll vote yes. We love you, Leanne.
That doesn't matter.
Okay. Can we pass this down to, and let the motion set March 11th, is that the date we want?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, do you guys like doing 6:30 or 7 o'clock?
Yeah, let's get it over with.
6:30.
10 a.m.?
I'm assuming the town would like us to pay for the notice, so we hope everything-
Always happens, though.
We'll drop a check off to the clerk.
No, 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 you have to do the notice.
Oh, we do our notice.
You do the notice. You're required to, when you come in for the opening of the hearing, in order for us to open the hearing, you will need to bring two copies of it being published in a local newspaper. Clinton items are cheapest, but you need them most late time. And it has to, the first one has to be a minimum of two weeks prior to the hearing. And Clinton item only publishes on Friday, I think. And you need to bring in return receipt requested for the list of the bidders.
Of course.
Now, you can go ahead and ask the assessors if you want a new list or you, I would, you know, if there's any jeopardy, you'll get the old list. But the cost of that and the actual mailing of it.
Of course, I just assumed the town did it.
We usually, we usually create the posting, okay? You have the old posting, do you?
Possibly.
I'm sorry?
Possibly. I was thinking I could check it being in the morning and just get the dates and get the stuff from the assessor also tomorrow morning and then I could get that.
Yeah, I don't have any problem, you know, writing one up for, you know, and then having Leanne send it to you if you want to do it that way, okay?
I just could gather all the information tomorrow.
But you know the date and time is March 11th and it's going to be at 6:30.
Ben, I'm sure a new assessor's list would be required because it's over six months.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It's always, well, anyway, in case if something was sold.
Makes it easier anyway because they give you the stickers.
Yeah, I mean, you should, if that's information, okay. So, I will do that tomorrow, Leanne, okay? And give it to you, Zoe, that tomorrow, the next day, you'll have it in plenty of time to do the posting if you would. Mr. Rhodes is fully aware of what he needs to bring to us because he's been to us a few times. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, and a vote, okay? On Leanne, the vote was what, four to one?
Four to one, I guess.
Okay, so that's the majority that we need. And see you in March.
Yep.
So, so now that's, that's-
Then you get someone near you.
I'm sorry?
Get someone near you. Get someone new into the room.
It's not official, I just wanted to ask the question.
Sure, that's fine.
The last time that we were here, there was supposed to be a decision about the condo association or housing association, and that's what the ruling, I thought, was gonna be on. I'm just asking a question. So, so we?
Yes, and, and the board addressed that issue, okay? Amy did write a decision, okay? But in the process of doing it, she realized that some of the things she needed in order to write a decision and do the waivers and so forth were not in the plans that we were given, okay? So, she, Mr. Rhodes has a new attorney. I meant to ask him for a card. He didn't give you a card, did he?
No, he didn't.
You'll see him in the morning.
Yeah. So, what happened was, um, our counsel spoke to his new counsel, and they said, "We can do this," or "We could do that," or "We could do this," or "We could do that." It was our counsel's suggestion that the neatest, cleanest way to do it would be to reopen the hearing. In order to do that, the request had to come from Mr. Rhodes or and his attorney. I choose and. And then it's up to the board to decide whether or not to reopen the hearing, okay? The board voted. It was not unanimous, but it was sufficient for us to reopen the hearing on March 11th at 6:30.
So, just, I hear, I understood everything you said. The only thing I didn't understand is, is that still the question for the board about the housing authority, the housing association or condominium? Is that still part of the question?
Yes, that is, that is still one of the questions on the table.
That's all I have to say.
And I'm sure we'll see you on the 11th.
You will. I mean, you will. I'm just hoping, a little more comment, but I know I shouldn't ask anything.
I think you got a feeling for where it was going at the last meeting, when it ended.
I felt very good about, whatever that means, I felt good about the last meeting. I'm nervous about this meeting, because it sounds like it's all up in the air again, and he has the right to re, whatever, do, reposition.
Well, in clarification of some of the pieces of what?
Oh, I heard, I understood what you were saying about privileges and all that.
We look forward to seeing you on the 11th.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you do. I'm sure everybody does, including you. Thank you for answering my question.
Do you have a question?
And we had the decision of Sawyer Hill Condominium Trust. We're all set on that, right?
Yep.
We signed that, and we're all done. Okay. So, now we're in receipt of a letter from counsel for Whitney Estates Condominium Trust, and a subsequent letter to which I responded to each of the members of the condominium trust about our decision. So, in the letter that we received, basically counsel is saying that the folks don't know how to, um?
Alloy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Disperse among the entities the amount due. So, is anyone here on behalf of the condominium trust? Well, I listed $10 and posted.
Can I speak?
I'm sorry?
Can I speak?
Um, I have, as long as I recognize you, and I do.
Okay. Really the silliest question I've ever seen in my life, but we'll go with it.
Thank you. This one has notes on it. Was it meant for me?
Yes, it's for you.
Okay. Now, let me give some background.
Oh, I think you have one.
Well, we won't be lacking for information.
No, it's elementary, and?
I have an original. Is that the mic?
No, it's got notes on it.
No, it's just got notes on it. All right. I'm here to clarify the issue that the condo association has with calculating this very elementary problem. As you know?
Lynn?
The town of Berlin?
Rebecca McTodde, state of Georgia.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Not that we haven't seen you before, but?
I'm Rebecca McDonald, three Elgin Drive.
Thank you.
And I'm here to clarify the calculation of the affordable condo fees. As you know, the town would never have intended to diminish voting rates for the affordable units. The square footage for the units will all stay the same. The units are not gonna change. They're all gonna be the same size. The beneficial interest is based on the square footage, so that stays the same. The only thing that changes is the 30, the 30% off of the 40B units. And in order to calculate the market rate unit, you use the Mass General Law 183A, and it's based on the square footage and beneficial interest. So, I took their budget from last year, which is the one with the first count. Their budget was $77,450. Now, you have to add in the money you're gonna deduct, obviously, from the fees. So, I added $5,000 to it and started with $82,450. When you break that down by the percentage, the monthly fees come out as noted on the paper. And then you deduct 30% off the top for the two 40B units. You would never use a larger unit or a different sized unit. I mean, that's their question. They're questioning which unit you base it on. You base it on the unit itself or the equivalent sized market rate unit. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I mean, it's so elementary to me, like, I'm confused, like, why it's a question? So, I'm wondering whether everyone else is having the same question, or whether they see that it's elementary.
I think the mistake is mine, that when the decision was written for this, I just made it 70, that, you know, the affordable unit should not exceed 70% of the condo fees charged to the market rate units.
Which is what you should say.
I should have said, should not exceed any of the units.
No, because then they would put it as the highest rate unit. They'd put it as the unit that's, like, way bigger.
It could not exceed what is assessed to any of the market rate. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
My concern?
But either way, it's still, it's still blatantly obvious. It's a stall tactic. They don't wanna change it. And that's why, the other reason why I'm here. I wanna ask that, whatever you write to them, that you require they implement this for March 1st. Because this will go on forever and ever and ever, and it will never change unless somebody tells them to change it.
Well, let me just say this about that. Did you, I, I sent them out. Did you receive a copy of the letter that I sent to them?
Yes.
Because they were asking to appeal our decision.
Okay.
Okay? Unfortunately, we can't accept appeals to our decisions. It has to be through the courts and filed with the town clerk within the statutory time allowable, okay?
And it wasn't.
That's correct. So, we are now living with what is there. As far as us writing to them and telling them they have to implement this as of date X, I don't think we can do that.
Well, it's in effect now. You've made the, the decision that no longer, as of that effect date, can I pay more than 70%?
Right.
So, February 1st, I shouldn't have paid 100% of my condo fee.
I apologize, but I don't think that we can turn around and do something. I think that H, what, CH?
Yeah, the building inspector needs to enforce the permit now.
What, he, that is a piece of it that he doesn't enforce. The housing authority, you now have the tools to go back to the, I would think. I mean, perhaps I'm wrong, I'm, maybe I'm giving you bad advice, but say, this was entered by the zoning board of appeals, but yet they continue to?
So, you want Christopher G. to do it at the DHTD?
With a, send a copy of our decision. Okay?
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm sure Leanne could give you a copy of the decision.
Yeah, the town clerk.
Can you email me one?
The town clerk could.
'Cause I wouldn't have it with the decision, with the signatures on it.
Yeah, with her signature on it, which is what you want.
All right.
Okay?
So, the DHTD should enforce it.
This is not my area of expertise, but I'm just saying, I know it's not up to us.
Well, legally, I don't have to pay the whole fee based on the decision. So, if I start paying, they have no legal right to put lien on my home, right?
I, I'm not a lawyer, okay? But I would think there's very strong evidence that it is the decision of this board that your condo fee should be at a 70% rate. Now, how they compute that might be a little different, and that's part of the reason that we're here tonight, because we have a letter from their counsel saying they don't know how they want?
No, but I just explained how. Is, is that different than how it should be done?
It has to come from the board.
So, you don't agree with that, how it should be done?
It's not a matter of agreeing. It's a matter of, it has to go through the proper channels, because you have a vested interest, and it has to come from us explaining it to them, because we can't say, you know, "Oh, the person who benefits from this told us to do it this way," because that's biased. So, it has to be something that the board has to write up.
So, right, so, are you gonna do that?
Well, that's what we're here tonight to discuss.
Okay.
Okay? And one of the things that is a possibility, I was hoping that the trust would be here, okay? But there don't seem to be any representatives.
Management company resigned from?
Okay. But the point that I'm making is, I thought we could appeal to them as reasonable people to say, you know, "When I looked at what they gave us, there are five," did you ask the assessors?
I got, they gave me the card, the assessor's card for each of the properties.
Okay.
That's another point. I'm not, I don't pay taxes on the full market rate, so why would I pay condo fees on the full market rate?
I, I hear you, but this evening, what we need to do is respond to the homeowners' association and provide them with guidance, or we could give them a general guidance. Now, when I look at this, I know that one of the affordable units is yours. What's the other one?
Number seven and number 10. There's marked on here.
Well, no, no, but I'm talking to the street address.
Oh, wow.
Because, trust me, when I was sending out the mailings.
B5, as would you know by the apartment.
No, see, that's, that's one of the things that I ran into.
It might be nine. It's Lynn McClye, if there's a name on there.
Well?
You've got a unit designation.
I had to send to everybody, and I had to look up names. I just?
Look at Google.
Lynn, I don't, is that the number of an LBS said? We're not allowed to identify which is the affordable unit.
Oh, okay.
We're not supposed to do that.
Which one, well, the assessors' records are public information, okay? And I have the assessors' records in front of me, so we could go that route, or we could go short circuit. I guess I wrote back to counsel, and he made reference to three of, um, let's see, three of the units being at the lowest percentage, and then four of the units being at the next lowest, and then this one unit that's at 12%, okay? I asked him, because that did not?
There's four and nine. Four at one, five at one, and one at one. One unit at one square footage, five units at one, and four units at one.
That's not what I saw here. That's not what I saw here. But in any event, the, he added the affordable units in and told me that the affordable units are all in the smallest square footage. So, we could do something like, do another revision. I, I really wish we didn't have to get into the weeds here, but correcting what I didn't do, and that was say, you pay, the affordable units pay 70%.
It's not my fault. I should've told you, you had to be that clear.
Well, the, the affordable units are at 70% of any of the market units, because they're the smallest units, and, I mean, that would just, in case someone comes up with some other creative way, because they change the way they assess these things. But one of the things I wanted to look at?
Cause you got four, four units of the same square foot.
Yeah, that's the thing. If they are able to compute them on a regular basis, they're doing it by square foot.
Right.
So, why isn't it a square foot rate, period, regardless of what, how much square footage there is, times 0.7?
Times 27?
No, 0.7, 70%. You just figure out the square foot rate.
But this, I wanna see the formula. In fact, I challenged my son-in-law to come up with the formula whereby you determine that other 30% has to be spread.
Yeah, it goes over the, the other?
Yeah. What's the formula?
You don't need a formula.
You do.
You just add the amount, the 30%, the 60%, you add that 60% into your original number.
Which changes what 70% is. So, if you just, if, say you had two units, and they were each at $100. If, you can't just say, "Oh, one's gonna be 70," 'cause then the other one becomes 130. So, it's not 70% anymore. You have to do 70% of 130, and you keep going back and forth. It's a little calculus problem. And, you know, you just keep doing it until you approach zero, and then you're at 30 and 70.
Or you come up with an algebraic formula that allows for 30 and 70% at each, but?
I can, but you gotta give me a minute.
Okay, so?
But, but either way, I think the concern, what I'm hearing, is that this is gonna be a vehicle for them to sort of bounce it back and forth long enough.
And they will never give you any information.
It's in their interest to prolong coming to a conclusion here. They know that, that the essence of our decision is, is exactly what you're saying. So, already, they're figuring a way to sort of delay it longer, and it sounds like that's causing you some distress, which, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do. I understand you would love us to do that, but we're doing everything we can, and what we're saying is, it's unlikely that they're, they're gonna just take our decision and make a change. I mean, one thing to consider is finding someone that can help you get counsel, or, you know, some other authority outside of us that can put some pressure on them to stop this game. You know, we can come up to? You know, we can come up to whatever decisions we can as little, and they're just gonna come back with another one and you keep prolonging this back and forth.
Your decision is decided and final, correct?
But it could be, anything can go for appeal.
Right, but, well, again, the appeal period's over.
As far as this board is concerned, the decision is filed. And that is basically, and I sent you a copy of the letter that we sent back to them, correct? And.
No, I don't think so. Oh, you sent a letter about that you can't appeal and that you're gonna take it.
They had sent us a letter wanting to appeal our decision. I sent them back a letter basically saying that it, well, the 28th was the 20th day, which would have allowed, the 28th of January for an appeal. The letter came, was written on the 27th and was given to Leanne on the 28th.
It wasn't even given to me, it was just left in the mailroom.
On the 28th, okay. In order to appeal our decision, you must go to court and file. And then you must bring that filing to the town clerk prior to the expiration of the appeal period.
Their lawyer is well aware of.
I, I would hope.
He's the biggest condo law firm in the state.
I, I would hope. All I'm saying to you is, I sent them back a letter basically saying, we're done with that piece of it, our, our work there is done. And that we would review their letter requesting input to.
Why isn't, why isn't the input just basically, you calculate the square footage of the 40-v unit and deduct 30%?
We need to interact with those that become, that come before us in decisions, okay? We have rendered our decision. Unless that decision is modified, that is it, okay? The only thing that I brought this before the board is if they wanted to provide some guidance. And quite frankly, I hoped that some of the folks from the condo association would be here this evening so that we could say, hey, folks, can't we just make this work at this point? Do you know what I mean? We either let it go as it is or we modify the decision that we made to specify exactly how it needs to be carried out.
One point on that thought though is that you're, in essence, reopening up and giving them an opportunity to appeal.
They can appeal the second decision.
Correct.
But not the first one. The 70% stands.
Yeah, the, the first decision is a done deal is done. They missed their appeal period, but if you go back for modification, they have a right to appeal that second modification.
Only for what's in the modification.
Correct, yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, I just wanted to make sure I was clear of that.
So the 70% wouldn't change ever, if they appealed the second one?
I don't believe in things never happening. I've seen too many of them, okay? But we have written into, updated the condominium association agreement to explicitly say that the, the affordables can only be assessed a condo fee at 70% of the market values.
Right, and all that needs to be edited is equivalent market value. Instead of market value, the equivalent market value unit.
I don't understand what you mean.
Because there's four market value, there's four units at the same size.
Right.
Two of them are affordable and two of them are market rate.
Right.
So all you would have to do is say, the affordable units pay no more than 70% of the equivalent sized market rate unit.
I suggest to you, we don't want to do that because, as in the letter they sent us when we said 70% and we thought that was the end of it. There may be some other ingenious way that they may choose to develop to assess it. I don't know, this is far-fetched number of people living there, okay? Parking, I don't, they may do a lot of different things, okay?
They can't make any changes to the comprehensive permit of, about affordable units without your approval.
I'm not gonna vote on this particular item, but the state law.
I don't know that we're gonna vote.
Well, I'm, I'm, I just wanna, state law only permits them to do, use two possible numbers for the calculation for assessing condo fees. They can either base it on the unit's percentage of the total square footage of all the units or they can base it on the percentage interest. They can't find some other, they can't base it on parking or the number of residents or anything else, that, those are not permitted, allowed uses for.
Well, what they're questioning, from what I'm getting out of the letter they sent, there are three different sizes of units. And there's one at 12, the others, I think, one is 9.67 and the other is 9.7. I mean, just under 10%. It sounds a little silly to me, but anyway, that's what it is. The affordables, according to council for the condominium trust, are the smallest of the units. In his letter, he said, do we take the whole, the assessment, the whole assessment for all? And they just, and just divide it by?
The number of units.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? And then they do 70% of that, in other words, they pay 70% of the average?
Right.
Or do they, I mean, it gets a little silly, okay?
There's lots of room for them to interpret it in their favor, or to Lynn's point, or, sorry, Sue's point. If you force them to do it on square footage, if you force them to be a specific formula, but then that requires us to open it up.
It has to be on square footage because the, is it in here? I hope I brought it.
Well, either way, I mean, the only thing that I can see, because you're, you're absolutely right, they're just gonna keep finding ways to delay this. You know, it, it really involves, you know, going to court for maybe an injunction against stopping them from charging you until this gets resolved. But you do, you, you have, would have to retain legal counsel, because we can't do that. But injunctions exist to stop something from going through and that may be your alternative. I, I mean, the other things that I've seen happen in the past is you come up with the money, but it goes into escrow until it's resolved. But you still have to come up with the money to show good faith that you're trying to work this out.
And that's fine. But how does number pay them?
But it's not us to say, I'm just saying, these are the things I've seen, but you really need legal counsel to tell you which way to go.
Well, you were saying square footage and the project eligibility letter states that the market rate units have to be based off of the Mass General Law 183A, which is based off of square footage.
Right, and so, I mean, we're all assuming this, but just given the letter that they already sent us, they're acting like they don't understand these numbers. It gives them room, just like any other.
One other thing that I make, square footage can change.
It can't change there.
Why?
I don't believe it's allowed to. You can't enlarge.
Why is one of the units so much?
One of them was the model unit and I actually, I put that in my speech, but I never read it.
And why, why is that?
It was totally upgraded and bigger in size because it was all finished, all three floors.
They're in lies the issue.
Yeah, what if, what if you finish out your third floor?
Yeah.
No, but what if you do?
Or someone else does. Okay?
They're not gonna change that if someone else does. Oh my God.
But do you see what I'm saying, that there's so many ways?
Yeah, but telling them nothing is gonna get it nowhere.
We haven't told them nothing. We've told them that there was an omission in the original decision that the board made, that the housing authority, that the LIP that the selectmen did. And it was our thought, not only our, but their thought, because for what, 10 years? This is what they've done?
Like 17.
Okay, who's counting? So, given those factors, we felt that it was an omission from the original decision, but that everybody, including them, because they followed it for multiple years.
You know what, it's.
And now, we feel we have done what we can do and that is to write into the decision, into the comprehensive decision, that the affordable units have to be at 70% of the market value units.
Right.
Now, the question that they have is, well, does that mean 70% of what all of them pay? Is that 70%? Is it an average 70% of, which would make a much more interesting formula, Susan, don't you think? But I don't know, and it would be up to the board. The only, only, only other thing I can see us doing, and we're getting you into a waiting period all over again, and as our building commissioner pointed out, there is a chance that, you know, they could realize that they missed a window last time and take this window this time, only to say that, you know, we don't know how to calculate them because this isn't finalized and we don't like the way you finalized it. Right now, things are decided, if you know what I mean.
Well.
But I think if they're sending, whatever way they were to choose to divide it up, to me, the largest assessment to the affordable units would be if they took the average. Okay?
But it's an obvious answer.
To you, to me, but not to everybody, okay?
Not to everybody?
The point I'm trying to make is, even if they said, well, it's gonna be the average, you know, 70% of the average the others pay.
But that's not what the decision says.
It's not gonna be that much different. Think about it. If you're 9.67 or you're 9.76, pretty close to 10. And there's one at 12, okay? So even if they take the average, I don't know.
It wouldn't be a huge difference.
It's not gonna be a huge dollar amount.
It won't happen because it's illegal. It has to be by square footage, you don't base it on an average.
Okay.
You know that we think we're believing you, but we can't go, that would be like you renting from me and you tell me, I'm only gonna pay you X amount of dollars because this is the way I wanna calculate it.
We have no authority to go to them.
So if I get Christopher G., the council from DHTD, to explain to you how to calculate it, you'll pass that on to them?
We have no authority to tell them that starting March 1st, you must do this and this is the way you must do it.
Right.
Currently, we have no way to do that. Even if we were to make a second modification, saying that you have to be less 70% of any of the entities, okay? Even if we were to say that, we have no clout, we have no ability to go to them and say, starting tomorrow, this is what you're gonna do. We create the groundwork.
Right.
Okay? Now, I would say, when you went to the housing authority before, what did they say?
They said that you, you guys should change it.
And?
They sent a letter to the condo association telling them that it should be the way that I just said it was.
And we've changed it, right?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, housing is not my bag. I don't know if anybody else here is a housing person. And I would suggest that you get a copy of the certified decision, okay? And there's a last page that says that the town clerk certifies that it's recordable, okay? And send that to them, you know, scan it and send it to the housing authority and see what they say.
Right, I might be back.
We love your company.
That's the only thing you can really, as far as I'm concerned, do.
Well, I have currently a retaliation lawsuit pending with them, so this is another part of retaliation against the lawsuits that are already settled, so.
Okay, why don't, why don't we?
That could be another avenue.
Why don't we do this?
I think I already lost my thought, but there's, there's a couple of points. Is, you could always call an attorney of the day to the state, that's a free service.
I have a pro bono attorney at Paul and Stewart. He just can only do so much.
Okay, and you can always go back to the housing authority because, like Lynn's saying, you, you, you have the tool, they, they provide you the tool.
Right.
So, so, so now you need to run it up the flagpole, give it to the housing authority so that they can contact the, the association and say, listen, you have to change your rate for this, for the affordables.
Right.
All right.
The, the other point I was gonna make, who, who's the entity that records this decision on their master deed?
The town clerk's gonna do it.
The town clerk will handle that?
She doesn't do the others, we usually require the petitioner to record it and then bring back a copy of the certification of the recording to the town clerk. That's usually written in the bottom of each of the decisions. But in this instance, there's been, this has been going on for a year now and the housing, our local housing group has been involved in it and so forth and so on. So to make sure that it got recorded, she said, which she has every right to, she would record it. I think it exists and it's valid, but it's not recorded as yet. One of the reasons was to wait to see if we could work things out with the folks here. Do you know what I mean? But, and, only because she could record the two if we needed to put another clarification for everybody on it.
She's irreplaceable, by the way.
I'm sorry?
She's irreplaceable.
Oh, absolutely. Almost as much so as Leanne, no. Ali and I have been good friends for a long time. What, okay, what I might suggest, if there's no objection on the part of my colleagues, that I will, that we continue discussion on this letter until on meeting in March. Okay, on the 13th, on the 11th, is it the 11th of March?
Yes.
Now, we're meeting with Mr. Rhodes in March. So, and we're meeting at 6:30. So let's put that letter on for 7:30.
Yeah, keeping my time.
And knowing that we may run late, but we can never start early, we learned that having eating pizza, right? So, and knowing that we're gonna be discussing it again on the 11th of March, okay? In the meantime, why don't you go through what you need to go through?
I'll email Christopher in the morning with the decision.
I think, although your attorney who offered to help me, but I declined, okay? Knowing that you, does he know? Knowing that you, does he know you have this in hand now?
Yeah.
He knows that we made a decision and that... Okay. And he has no suggestions for you?
Well, he forwarded me the letter from the attorney, asking how to calculate this craziness, like it's a big problem. And I told him that I sent an email trying to clarify it and that I would go to the meeting because he, he's a pro bono lawyer. I can't afford to pay him to come to a meeting. He's from like one of the best law firms in Boston, and that's like too great.
Well, all, all he needs to do is guide you, and I have a feeling, Becky, that you will well be able to represent yourself wherever he sends you. I have a feeling he'll send you to State Housing now that you have the bird in the hand.
Right.
And if it is, as you say, that they have to go on square footage or something, then there's no question. Do you know what I mean?
There is, there is no question. That's what I'm so annoyed about because they're only doing this to make me pay more. And I'm not, I'm going to change my February fee when I get home and I'm going to put the rest in Ex-Gro.
Oh, don't, jeez.
I don't, yeah. They can sue me. They don't, they're going to spend their money to sue me over that amount of money? Let them.
My suggestion was to discuss it with your attorney.
Well, you could do the reverse. Not that I'm giving advice, but you could pay it and then sue them in small claims.
Yeah, I plan on doing that for last year.
For any event, in any event, okay? Do you think that's a workable thing? Can you do that in between now and then and maybe, okay?
No, talk to Eloise on the way out. Thank you for your time and patience and...
I'm sure we'll see you again.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Wish it would be under better circumstances.
Well, I have a feeling you'll be representing others on behalf of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, baby. Violation again because I started doing math, just to get an average. Because that's what I ended up doing.
She was like, she accepted the, like $10 more.
It, yeah. The funny thing is, it's a huge difference, because I, I, I wouldn't fall out. It's a huge difference to the affordables, but it's only $10 more for the rest of yours.
Yes.
So, there, those, whoever was appealing it was appealing $10 more.
There, I don't think, I, I hear things, but their management company is on. Okay? I don't think it was because they were retiring.
She legal fees, $10,000.
Okay, and do we have anything else that we need to enter? I vote Becky, she spends a lot of time on... Did you get one of these, Leanne?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you a question.
Oh, good.
We have a balance of $639.72.
Folks, hold on a second.
Oh, do they, okay.
We have a balance of... Party!
For Leanne's wages.
I'm not sure.
She can continue getting paid for a few months.
I'm telling you.
And I believe if we go over...
Oh, yeah.
We can take money out of the expense line item if needed be to a certain percentage.
You going to say that while somebody from the slick board is sitting here?
We have to vote to transfer it, and I think the selectmen may have to approve it or something. We can take a look at that. But what I'm asking you for the balance is, we have not put any additional money in for next year. But I think what we need to do is when, I'm hoping you and I go to the FinCon, okay? That we explain to them that we ran out of money in whatever, okay? And therefore, we feel we need an increase in the budget.
We...
How much of an increase?
Well, I think it's going to depend on what happens between now and June. I don't know if this year is particularly atypical.
Or attorney fees?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, attorney fees are separate. They're paid by the selectmen, okay?
Cha-ching, cha-ching.
Well, this is, there's, there's an account for that, okay? Did we vote to move that letter to March 11th at 7:30?
No.
We didn't vote.
And someone would...
It was me.
So moved.
Just a second, please. In favor, I.
Fine.
Opposed, you're dead. Okay, so we can bring that letter up again. I, there's several reasons, but I really don't think, if we go and make another revision, I have a feeling...
You're going to get another letter?
That I'll get another letter saying, yeah, but, okay?
I think you're right. Yeah, it's, it's, I mean...
And I think we've...
You nailed it.
We've done what we can do for them.
Yes, we have.
I don't know what else we could have done. Is, does everybody kind of feel that way?
I do.
I had, I, question.
Lynn?
For next week. I know you're probably not on Facebook, but...
Oh, of course not.
There was quite the discussion about the upcoming hearing on February 12th, and one person commented that the zoning board says one thing and then changes her mind and says something else, and so...
And I think he was sitting in the audience this evening.
What are we discussing on the... Oh, are you friends with the neighbors?
Yeah.
Did Berlin Neighbors complain on Facebook?
I think we are bound...
I have next door, is it Berlin Neighbors? What happened to Berlin Neighbors Connect?
That's what it is, I just don't call it that.
I, I don't know what happened. It went away on my Facebook.
Yeah, they kicked you out, be grateful.
I think they kicked me...
How'd you do that?
I never even...
Anyway, so I just, it would be nice if before that hearing started that we can, that we could make an announcement saying that all decisions are filed with the Registry of Deeds and cannot be changed.
Or you could kind of all put that on Facebook.
Before we open that hearing, we make an announcement, what?
Just, you know, that the decisions that the zoning board makes are final and are filed with the Registry of Deeds. It's, we don't change them after the fact.
So, in other words, we're doing things behind the scenes?
Yeah, so they're accusing us of...
Who is accusing us?
Okay, I...
Doug.
Doug.
Folks, I just want to, people don't understand. For example, we're going to reopen this hearing, okay? I, there are going to be those that think that we're playing games, okay? They don't understand the particulars that council, you know, spoke to the other council and advised us that this was the right thing to do. So, I, but one thing I'll caution everybody here, please don't get on social media of any kind, whether it's our town or whatever, and discuss anything that could or is before the board.
Yes.
Because you're tainted, okay? The minute you express any kind of an opinion or make any kind of a statement, other than we try to follow the law, okay? We try to follow council's advice. That's as far as I would go with anything. Does everybody get it?
Yes.
Yeah, no, the, here, the statement, he said, "In my experience, the ZBA can issue permits for one thing and then make changes later." And I thought it would be good to just clarify to the people in the audience, because this guy's expected to be one, that that is not how it works.
You're responding to social media?
Yeah.
Which indicates that you're on social media. I would suggest that it's a slippery slope.
Well, once you get pulled into a rabbit hole, it's hard to get out.
Yep. Even if you're, even if you're not, even if you're not sort of saying that...
Well, of course, you're telling them all now because we're being recorded. Which, by the way, I did not announce.
My viewpoint is if somebody wants to make a comment about the ZBA, they can show up here and stand up and say something. I don't see why we should respond to, respond here to something somebody posts on social media just because they make a comment. If they want to, you know, if they have an objection to something we do, all these are open meetings. They can come and voice their opinion.
Yeah, I just, I thought it would be good for them to understand that it's, you know, things are filed at the Registry of Deeds and it's legally binding, that it's not something that we change later.
Well, I think you just, like...
I think you just, I think at this point, we did, because I forgot it was being recorded, too.
Well, but I think we're, you're getting into a rabbit hole here where you, you know, somebody makes a comment on social media and you're going to, every meeting, we're going to be making announcements about what we do and don't do and...
No, okay.
It, it, it ends up being a one-way thing. They, they, somebody posts some off-the-wall comment on social media and then we have to respond to it here every time, and I don't think we want to get into that.
Yeah, no, I just, knowing that it's going to be probably a big turnout. Who knows, maybe the question will come up anyway.
I think every question will come up.
Yeah.
I suggest if you have an opportunity, I know, Pat, you asked for a copy of the plan.
I did get it.
Yeah, I've got several hard copies if someone wants them.
I also go on their website.
There was one other thing I wanted to ask you. Jim Wheeler, because I'm such a complainer, asked me to give him some ideas as to what is bugging us. And I mentioned, this is for potential...
There's a tree hanging over my street.
In reference to what?
It's bugging me.
Attention to the bylaw and what's difficult. And I told him that they should take a look at gross vehicular weight because the people that come in for contract...
Oh, yeah, contracts.
Contract, uh, home-based contracting business say, yeah, my car's registered for 45 tons, but it's always empty, so it's only one ton, okay? That they should, you know, make a decision as to how we should interpret the weight. Either it's the registered, motor vehicle registration that...
Please.
One other thing, let's see what else was there? Oh, on the non-conforming. And what I'm looking for is for you to note what I'm saying. If there's something else you want to, but on the non-conforming, we used to have, you can't make more than a 50% increase in non-conforming use. That, uh, non-conforming structure, that's no longer in there.
Well, that would have changed one thing, yeah.
The other thing is that you can authorize a change in use provided it's less detrimental. So, what I mentioned to Tim was, if someone who owns a junkyard wants to open an auto body shop, is that less detrimental?
Oh, okay, so that's up for interpretation.
Well, it's also the fact that we can do use changes. And I don't think they want us doing use changes, okay?
Yep. I don't think I want to be doing use changes.
There were a couple of clerical things, like, you know, they, just the charge didn't work well. I told them we might have more to say after next week. I'm trying to think, there was one other thing...
This is the River Road.
No, but what is she talking about? Just in general.
No, in general.
Now, I'm used to using mouse. Is there anything else pressing that you think the planning would be looking at that needs to be defined better?
As you say, the truck weight.
Okay.
The, the 50%, so we knock it down to maybe 30%.
I did mutter something along those lines, that it used to, you know, in other words, it used to be 50% is that quick. The change in use, I'm trying to think of a couple of other things.
When does he need a response to that?
Well, if they're going to do it, it's going to be PDQ because it has to go as an article on the town, if you warrant.
Well, do I, do I have to pull up my zoning book now and go through it? Or can I do it tomorrow?
Tomorrow would work well.
Okay.
All right, here, notes to Tim.
What, is Monday too late?
No, but I think I would send it to them directly and send a copy to Leanne so that we aren't, don't get caught up in having a meeting without having a meeting.
I think I remember something was vague about contracting...
Let's see, so, Tommy's contracting owner occupied. I said to Tim, I have a lodge house and there's just one of them. If I want to rent to someone, and they want to do a home-based contracting business from there, can they?
Well, you're, okay, get your stuff.
I'm the owner and I occupy it. There's no links of business. Just a thought.
Yes, you should...
We ran into that, remember when the son wanted to also...
Yes, exactly.
Uh, when doing home-based contracting business, petition office said that the trucker vehicle... I told you about that. Lot size, the second item in the table says 80,000 to 160,000. It should be 80 or less than 160. Non-conforming use, the 35% rule, the bylaw formally limited the expansion of a pre to 50% change in use. The bylaws allows a change in use if the use is less detrimental. So, if a junkyard is changing to an auto body shop, do we want that in a residential neighborhood? How do we determine if it's less detrimental? More noise versus less outdoor storage? So, in-law and accessory apartments, clarification of the 35% of the dwellings, floor areas needed, are using dwellings, apostrophe S singular. Does it mean the apartment could be 35% added on to the main residence? Should it say 35% of the total floor area of both the main dwelling and the apartment? Or the, could the dwelling, apostrophe S, be changed to dwellings, S apostrophe? Can a multi-unit, okay, here we go. Can a multi-unit development ultimately have an in-law apartment for each unit?
I can see...
This is particular question as it relates to dense residences, as in Chapter 42B. The bylaws says that there can only be one apartment per lot. Does this mean that the type of ownership enters into the equation? If the units are condominiums with individual ownership, could each unit have an apartment? In the case of joint ownership, would it be first come, first served?
Oh, my gosh, Lynn.
I have too much time on my hands.
You're overwhelmed.
And then under the residential care facility, Table of Principal Use Regulations, one entry for residential care facility is for not more than six patients. The other is for not more than 100 patients. Does that mean that you could have a residential care facility for five persons in an LP district?
Also, if you're having a special permit to allow that, right? A special permit? Do you go back in five years and say, okay? Doesn't work anymore, what do you do?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to...
Okay, well, that's for the discussion at the next meeting. But yes, I think you have a very, very strong point.
Well, I mean, it's discussion for the next meeting because there's a specific one coming up, but we're talking about it in terms of changing the bylaws. Right, so in that context, can't we talk about that now? I mean, what I'm seeing is that there's all these multi-unit developments coming in, and we're meeting state code fine, but then... and we're meeting state code fine, but then they're changing their own rules to eliminate...
Yeah, the contradictions.
The contradictions. And so, you know, really the question is how can we button up the bylaws to keep them from doing that? Rebecca is the perfect example, right? You know, that whole development wouldn't have existed if it wasn't for the affordable housing.
Exactly.
And they're slowly chipping them away.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's the biggest thing that I see for the planning board to tie up. That, you know, and, you know, and new developments coming in that clearly have, you know, is it a residential care or is it something that's gonna turn into apartments down the road? Like, this is...
All we have to go on at this point, because they are not gonna change the bylaw in time for this one.
Yeah, but if you do have...
Is the, I suggest you read the definition of residential care facility in the back of the book.
Okay.
But how do you hold a special permit? How does, like, he enforce it? How do you kick out a 100-unit thing if it doesn't do?
Right, if it goes bankrupt, right, and then what? Then it's just apartments or condos, you know?
What do you do, tear it all down?
Or it's vacant.
Salt beer, start over again?
Discussion for next week, but good thoughts. The other thing I said was common driveways.
Yes, common driveways.
I'm sure you could come up with better... I'm sure you could come up with better language. Maybe affecting its accessibility by users or emergency vehicles or redirecting water runoff doesn't need to be part of the following suggestion. This was my suggestion. Any change or structural addition beyond general maintenance in the location, width, length, height, or material composition of a common driveway affecting accessibility by users or emergency vehicles or redirecting water runoff must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board.
Did she put bump speed bumps?
No, they do them there.
Oh, yeah, but speed bumps. What about speed bumps?
That's redirection.
Redirection is...
Beyond general maintenance, they can't make any change in the location, width, length, height, or material composition.
That's a speed bump in another language.
Also, if it affects the accessibility by users or emergency vehicles.
Gotcha, okay, good.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, I don't know. They may very well change it.
Can we request that they put in a definition for contractor yard? Because there is no definition for it.
In other words, all the messy things we have in town?
Yeah, so there's, there's no way for us to tell them why it's a contractor's yard other than it's in the, we think it is.
As opposed to a home-based contracting business?
Yes.
Okay.
Because even a home-based contracting business, if it's a landscaping business, I don't think, well, I don't know, maybe we do think, piles of bark mulch and concrete block and other things.
Okay, in what instance would that not come before us in the form of a special permit?
Because contractor yards are not permitted, period. But home-based contracting is. Where is that line between contractor yard and home-based contracting?
Can you think of a definition that could be put in that would affect what you want it to do?
Yeah, just that we know where it stops being home-based contracting and starts being contractor yard.
The devil's always in the details. What's the definition gonna be? You can't store more than 30 pounds? I mean, I, you know, what, what specific... Rich would have to go and enforce something, okay?
Yeah.
It's gonna be the bing, the bing, the bing, the bing, the bing. You can't grow flowers on Tuesday, okay? He goes over on Tuesday, you're growing flowers, he can, you know, cite you.
Yeah.
But if you just say you need a wine, then maybe can you suggest one?
I can work on that and get back to you.
Well, maybe I'm confused. When, if we approve a home-based contracting business, we can put restrictions in that permit for what they're permitted to have on the lot and what they're not.
You can't just make them up, though, can you?
But, but if we don't at that time, and then they start, like, say they come in and they say, "I don't do anything on site. It's just my, I'm just keeping my equipment here."
Okay.
And we give them an approval for five years. There's nothing in there about what they can and can't do. All of a sudden, their business grows and now they're storing stuff on site.
My understanding is the permits that we have granted, at least since I've been on the board, have said, "You're not allowed any storage of materials on the site." Now, my understanding of a contractor's yard is contractor's storage area unconnected to a house. Unconnected, so if I have a five-acre lot on the backside of town and I just wanna store my mulch and gravel there, and there's no house on the lot, that's a contractor yard.
But you even just said it, your understanding of it. And I'm saying, we should have something in writing. So it's not your understanding of it, and then you leave the board and somebody else comes in and they have a different understanding of it. I think it needs to be finite.
Well, one of the things I think, on any verbiage that either we or the planning board comes up with to make any changes or clarifications, they should run it by you, Rich. Because you need, is it tight enough for you to make a decision?
Right.
You know, you say you can't have any commercial vehicles in the, define commercial.
Well, the other thing I noticed on the home-based contracting bylaw, you define the size and number of trucks or trailers you can have, but it doesn't get into your Bobcat tractors, your mini excavators and stuff like that. So you only define, "Oh, I can have one or two trucks, I can have a trailer," but it doesn't talk about all the ancillary equipment that goes along with that home-based contracting business. If you're just a plumber, you might just have a van. But if you're a landscaper, you're gonna have all the other, the mowers, the mini excavators, the skid steers and everything else that go along with that. But that's not defined in that category. It just says, "I can have a truck and I can have a trailer," but it doesn't talk about all the ancillaries that go along with that business. Yeah, and again, I just assumed that those weren't permitted at all if they weren't... And maybe it's not, because again, it only has verbiage about, "I can have X amount of trucks up to a certain amount of weight, and I can have a trailer up to a certain amount of weight." If you have a trailer, it turns out you're pulling something. What, you know, do you have the mini excavator?
Yeah, you don't buy a trailer just to tag along behind you.
Well, I mean, if they left their, you know, if they have a Bobcat and they put it on the trailer, personally, I'd say, well, okay, you know, whatever. But if they have six Bobcats parked in the backyard, that's not permitted at all. You're permitted to have trucks, you're permitted to have trailers. There's nothing in it that says you can have an excavator or a skid steer or...
So on West Road and 62, right past Jenny's place, that on the left-hand side where they have all the roots pulled and the trucks and stuff there. So is that, what is that? Is that something that's...
Well, that is, that was a house lot that was sold and he's turned it... I think it's, it looks to me as if he's, has business vehicles there. There's trailer, there's a lot of big equipment.
Yeah, there's tons of equipment there. That's why I assumed that it was allowed. So you're saying that's not allowed in any context, or...
I wouldn't think that was allowed.
Some of that's found.
Okay.
Which...
Well, but should there...
He also has a DDP number up.
What's that?
He also has a DDP sign up. You know, permit, a DEP permit.
And what does that give him?
But that's for excavation, that's not for the equipment.
He's allowed to have that stuff there while he's working on it.
Yes, okay.
So I was using that as an example, is that allowed? But that might not even be allowed.
Well, I think he's, I think he's skirting it because he's not a farmer.
I think he's skirting it and using it for his business.
Oh, he's definitely using it for business, yeah.
Yeah, but I think he's, he's got this, he's calling it a construction site right now with the DEP permit
Okay.
in order to store his stuff there.
Okay, and how many years can you do that? Because he's been doing it since I've been around.
Oh, it's been many years, many, many, many.
It took, it took me 10 years to run it, eat my house.
Well, there's usually a DEPK sample. We could call up and ask them.
Okay, so that's a separate issue. I was thinking it was an example of what you can do, so maybe it's an example of what he shouldn't be doing.
You're right, it is an example of what you can do.
Yeah.
I probably shouldn't.
But whether you should.
It's kind of a burn my side personally.
Yeah.
It's such a mess.
But another question too is the Oak Street people. They both want to have home-based contracting businesses. And I don't know if that's addressed at all. Can, can a husband and wife each have their own home-based contracting business?
Well, we suggested they split the lot up, not their home.
Not any of those lots.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The lots they shouldn't be able to use.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, is it, do we say in there?
Oh, do we have a limit on the lot?
Is it limited to one home-based contracting business per...
I would think it would be.
If they change the language.
Yeah.
Is it in there?
From what I understand, one of the two is more of a craft-type thing. And that comes under the heading of, what is it, home occupation?
Home-based business.
You know, like if you knit sweaters or you, I don't know. I don't know how, to what extent you could do that kind of stuff within your home and still be a cottage industry, if you would. So my understanding was one of them was that and the other one was blatantly, you know?
No, one was, one did something with foundation work. And I thought the other one was a contractor.
Okay, well, let's do this. Let's not discuss something that might come before us, other than conceptually. So if you do have ideas and if you, and something that's relatively concrete, maybe you could share them with Leanne so it wouldn't be a, and she could, like, the planning board, you know?
So is Rich's suggestion is, do we need to...
I'll bring them back next week. I don't think there's any reason we couldn't wait till next week.
Okay. I mean, I think that was a great idea, just wanted to make sure that we capture that. Are you gonna, are you gonna submit your provisions as well, or are you gonna submit them to us?
He's in a hard point, he's in a hard position to do that.
I don't, I don't think I got that same memo from the planning board. I haven't seen that come through the meeting. That's too long.
No, this is something pretty much between Tim and I.
Okay.
Because I would say about six or seven times I've shot him down on the town meeting floor. And the first, next couple of years, he tried and said, "You should really attend our hearings."
I have one item that I think should be in there, and that is, any permit issued by any permit issuing authority in this town should be in writing.
That's common sense. We don't do that by the...
The planning board don't.
How do they do it now if it's not in writing? Because it has no validity or use for the person that they're sending it to.
The planning board, they go through, like, if you wanna do a common driveway, they go through and they say, "Okay, here's all the requirements." And you say, "Yeah, okay, here's my plan." Here, I meet them. And they say, "Okay," and they vote. But they don't put anything in writing.
Don't they have to record the common driveway, though?
The homeowner does.
And there's guidelines in the bylaw.
So they take it to the...
Registry of Deeds.
Registry of Deeds, and they record it, and they bring back a copy and say, "Look, we recorded it." And they say, "Okay, you're good."
I didn't know it was that easy. Maybe I'll develop a common...
That's my understanding. I haven't gone through all this stuff, but my understanding is they don't always write it down.
Some of them in years past have started out as common driveways. They go for a permit to build a road. And then it become, came a common driveway. It had a street name, but it was never accepted by the town because it was never built per their specs, the town's specs. For the gravel and three inches of hot top, so much width and so on and so forth. It's almost like a paper street.
Well, I'm just saying, your stuff, there's...
Let's do this, folks. Well, Leanne is stuck here, I'm sure.
Okay, oh, yeah. We'll be back next week.
We can, you know, continue the discussion, but why don't we...
Adjourn?
Adjourn, so that Leanne can leave.
And we all have more.
Why don't we say that if you have other suggestions, that you can either send them to Leanne or we can talk about them at our next meeting and see if we can try to, you know, give good guidance. Sometimes four or five heads are better than one, particularly this one. Okay, would someone care to make the motion, or did they?
Make a motion, we close this meeting.
Adjourn, okay. Then we have a second to do it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a unanimous...